Welcome everyone, we'll call the meeting to order and as usual we will do a prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance and then roll call. Do you want to come up front Kent? If you want to.
I already.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day and the freedom to meet. Give us wisdom in our decision making. Protect our military, police officers and emergency personnel. Lord, we help us recognize and enjoy all the blessings that you have placed in our lives. It is in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Mr. Beverly is sick, as we suspected. Okay. Roll call please.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Okay.
For Resolution 2018-18. Troy's.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay. Is that good enough for you for the meeting roll call? I thought if we needed to do it again, we could. Alright, we will start with the approval of the regular council meeting minutes from July 16th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Roll call please.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Alright, you have an approved bills list in your packet. Are there any questions about any of the bills?
I just had one question real quick. The best equipment, did the attachments come in for the new truck?
Yep.
And install?
They've actually used a couple of them already.
Alright, working good?
Under $10,000.
It was under 10.
I would like to thank Farmer Fabrication for coming out of retirement to do those bollards for us. I hear he's retired, but I appreciate him coming and doing the work for us.
I got a question on the back of the first page. ER visit, did that get turned into insurance?
To make a long story short, it was simpler for us to pay the hospital, I'm going after the driver involved for that, plus our $1,000 deductible.
Okay.
Insurance companies also go to try to get our $1,000 deductible. So he said whoever gets it first, let the other one know, but the hospital bill didn't warrant being a worker's comp claim.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll get our money back.
Any other questions?
Motion to pay the bills?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
I'll say.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have Mark Young, Bob Garza from Two Bandits Brewing, and they were telling me these great plans they have for a summer festival in downtown Hicksville. And I asked them if they would just come and explain it to all of councils so that you can hear what the plans are. And so there's, I don't know if there was something specific I had in mind I want them to know about, but I want them to pretty much just know what your plans are, because you will be closing down part of the downtown street for this event, so go ahead and take the podium.
That's correct. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for allowing us to speak today. You might be just a little nervous that I'll usually talk to this many people at one time, but it's all good. So what we're going to do this year, we're calling it Hoptoberfest, as opposed to Octoberfest, hop for the beers. It will be August 6th. Excuse me.
I say it's today.
Hey!
I'm out.
Free beer.
October 6th, and it will be from noon till 11:00. We believe that it's going to be a lot of fun, it's going to draw in, we hope, we think, a lot of people from a lot of surrounding communities. Some of the events that we're going to be doing is, some of you may or may not have noticed, once a month, we host a bike show called Bikes and Brews, and it usually brings in a very large crowd. We had 120 motorcycles the last event, so we decided we wanted to incorporate that a little bit into Hoptoberfest. So it was actually going to be a show from 1:00 to 4:00, right in front of the brewery. And we're not going to be giving away crappy trophies, we're going to be giving away gift cards to the brewery. So we think that that's going to entice a lot of the same people that come for the bikes and brews to show up for that. We are going to be having live music from 1:00 in the afternoon till 11:00 at night. 1:00 to 5:00 will be an actual genuine polka band out of Ridgeville Corners, complete with tuba, and they will be up front underneath our awning. I think that will be a lot of fun. Our executive chef and our sous chef will be having our Mexican street corn once again, as well as our cherry wood fired brats out on the street. Then the wannabes have been so gracious, they're going to kick it for us at 6:00 inside the brewery. And I think one of my favorite activities we're going to do is, I don't know if anyone here is a runner, they do a 13-1 or a 26-2, I know you are, indeed. But what we're going to do is, we're going to do a 0.8K. And it's tongue in cheek, it's supposed to be fun, it's supposed to be funny, and it's so that anybody can participate. For those of you who come into the brewery a lot, you know that we try to give back to the community as much and as often as we can. And the Helping Hands of Hicksville is near and dear to both myself and Bob for many reasons. So the proceeds for this run are going to be generated for Helping Hands, as well as the debuffification, help me out here Diane, debuffification of Hicksville. The committee that takes care of all of the flowers and all the watering. I think they're kind of unsung heroes, and I really respect what they do, and I think that they make downtown look beautiful for everybody, and so we want to give back a little bit to that too. So, like I said, it's a 0.8K, halfway you stop for a donut, and when you finish, you get a pint of beer. Alright? So we've seen, we've got a lot of interest generated for it already, and I'm sincerely hoping if we can get 100 participants, I would be very, very pleased. Bob and I are working out the route, even as we speak, we're very close to having that finished. And when we do have it finished, we'll present it to the proper authorities to make sure that, you know, it will be acceptable. Couple of things, we'll also be, we'll also have our Farmer Jay's Octoberfest beer, which we had last year, that'll be back again, as well as the preview of our fall and winter menu. So there will be an awful lot of neat things happening throughout the entire day. I have been talking with my neighbors, and I think that we're going to get a lot of support and a lot of things going on with all of our business neighbors, I'm really hoping for that as well. So that's kind of the basis of what we're doing with that this year, and I think, I have some really good feelings about it, I think it's going to be very successful. Diane had talked to me, I don't know if you remember, we talked about a lot of things, about that House Bill 47 that Toledo and Napoleon are now enjoying, and I've done some research on that. And so I'd like to talk to you about that just for a minute. Now, I don't think that this is something that we could do yet this year, because it's simply, I think it would take longer than that to do. But essentially, what House Bill 47 is, it became, let me tell you what it is first. It became law in April of 2015. And Diane had actually told me about it, I didn't know until she told me about it, and so I decided to do a little research. Essentially, what it is, in essence, it allows communities to have open container within a specified area of their choosing for a specified time. There are 15 communities in the state of Ohio who do this. Toledo and Napoleon are the closest. Toledo has two. Toledo has one in the CBC, as well as one in their warehouse district. And the Napoleon one wisely encompasses their brewery and their winery, so you can have open containers within that area. There are obviously rules and laws that everyone would have to abide by. Essentially, you purchase your drink at the, let's talk about us, at Two Bandits, and then you'd be allowed to walk in that area with that open container, and for a set period of time. Now, for something like Octoberfest, that would be ideal. You wouldn't have to go and get any other kinds of permits, you wouldn't have to be concerned about timeframes, because this is something that the state has given the authority for communities of 35,000 and under to enact as they see fit. So as I said, there's specified hours. They cannot carry those libations into any other business for any reason whatsoever, they must be consumed before they enter another business. Napoleon's is called NORA, which stands for Napoleon Outside Refreshment Area. It went live five days ago in August the 5th. Excuse me, August the 1st. Toledo has two, they call theirs DORA, which is Downtown Outside Refreshment Area. And as I said, it's in the CBC as well as the warehouse districts, it went live June 15th, 2017. And I've done some research. Napoleon obviously is way too new to even know how it will or won't affect their businesses, but Toledo has glowing reports about how it's brought in even more business to the downtown area. What I would affectionately like to see it called, if something like this was to be enacted next year, or the year after, or whenever, it would be called OLA, Hicksville Outdoor Libation Area. OLA is Spanish for hello. So it's kind of fun, and I mean, it gets the point across. So once again, and these are just, these rules that I found, I basically stole right off of Napoleon's, you know, and they can be modified however the council would see fit. So drinks are purchased from the designated establishment, and they're consumed in that district specifically. And if that district, let's just say hypothetically, was from the stoplight to stoplight, that would encompass the huber as well. So if they were having an outdoor concert, well, they could walk over there and enjoy their beverage when the concert was going on. If they were going to a show, they could pick up a beverage, and then they could enjoy it before they entered the show. Once again, beverages must be consumed before they enter any building. They can only use a specified, in this case, OLA cup. It's a plastic cup, and it has the markings on it, whatever it is, you know, it's the village of Hicksville, it's a pair of aces, whatever that would entail. And they have to make sure that when they're finished, obviously, it gets thrown in the proper receptacle. So that is what I have found out. I think that it has some real merit. I think it could bring even more potential business into this great community that we call home. And personally, I think that Hicksville is a very progressive community, and I think that there's certainly room for something like this to happen.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do have some, you know me Diane, I print up some papers, so you know, you can look at it. And everything that I have printed up, I have gotten directly off of the internet, based on the writings from newspapers, and actually, Toledo actually has a website specifically, DORA has a website specifically for their open container. And you know, you can see what establishments are part of that, where you can go, everything. So that information all comes from the internet.
Okay. You wouldn't know this, but under the mayor's report, we had that topic on the agenda, and like I said, you wouldn't have known that, so you did a great job of explaining it to them.
I hope so.
I would just wonder concerning his festival.
How long does it take to get like a permit? We have to pass resolution on guessing?
Indeed, because as I said, Ohio law, which is Bill 47, they basically have given the green light to any community that wants to do this with the specification of 35,000 people or under. So they essentially allow you to make the rules. Where it goes, from what area to what area, if it's a certain time of day, if it's a certain time of year. Now, I know that Toledo's is all year long. I think Napoleon's though, is based on summer months only. So it's entirely dependent on what you all decided that you wanted to do.
I think your festival sounds great also.
Thank you.
What you have planned, I think it'd be great for the community.
I hope so.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
When is the, doesn't the fire department have a 5K run?
We've got a 5K that morning and a breakfast that morning.
Okay, I didn't know.
And it was, we actually had a meeting, and we actually scheduled that way purposely.
Okay.
So that.
That worked out great.
Yeah, you know, first, and since ours is only a 0.8, which is roughly about four blocks.
I might be able to make it Mark.
See, that's what I'm doing, and that's why we did that.
If there's a donut involved in a beer, I'll probably make it.
I'm telling you, and that's part of registration, you know, so, and as I said, you know, they're going to a couple of really good causes, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I love the idea. I love the idea, if you ever check into Minster, Ohio, the second weekend of October, they have their big, usually that's their big Octoberfest there, and it draws in over 40,000 people that weekend for that town. Everyone has to have, actually, they sell all their beer in half gallon milk containers, and then they give you certain cups, and you can buy one container, share it with friends, but they go through a lot, and you can walk the whole square, and they have vendors everywhere, brings in a lot of extra business to their community.
I believe so too, Eric, I really do, you know, I mean, I think it has merit. I mean, I think like anything in life though, I mean, it has to be taken with responsibility, and you know, there have to be rules set. But I think that, you know, if Toledo has two of them, and there seems to be a lot of positivity about it, Napoleon is just doing it, I think that there must be some merit to it. You know, and as I said, you know, I think that Hicksville's a very progressive community, and they welcome Two Bandits Brewing Company with open arms. And I humbly think that this is, obviously, it would be good for us, I mean, I'm not going to lie to you, but I think it has potentially be good for the entire village, you know, I mean, and it's certainly dependent on, you know, where the district would want to be established, you know. Jony brings up a very good point, you know, I mean, kind of based on what Eric has already alluded to, I mean, I don't know how you all feel about it, but I would absolutely love one day to have 40,000 people in downtown Hicksville for this event. Can you imagine the kind of money that would be? Indeed, indeed.
Okay, well, oh, go ahead.
And I like, I love the idea, I love the concept of it. An umbrella like that, liability, because I know in past events and things, on who would that liability fall on for, you know?
Well, I can speak to this at least to a little bit, based on DORA, which is the Toledo one, and they have a disclaimer at the very bottom of the website, and I'm going to read it to you word for word. It says, "Note," now, I've actually, I paraphrase this because I put village of Hicksville where Toledo would go, "Note, all state of Ohio and in this case, village of Hicksville laws regarding public intoxication, impaired driving, and open containers apply to areas both inside and outside of the OLA boundaries. Please drink responsibly." So if you're being an idiot, you're going to pay the consequences. And I think it's important again to note that those glasses, those plastic cups are not allowed out of that boundary area. If you're walking around, and let's just say again hypothetically, you know, you leave that block, and you go somewhere else, and one of Hicksville's finds you, that's your problem, and you're screwed.
Any other questions for Mark?
Thank you for coming and telling us all about that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
Indeed, indeed.
Thanks Mark.
One other quick question, if anyone's interested later, I did, Bob and I brought our plans for the new building, we finally have them, yay, and we are talking to contractors even as we speak. So if anyone's interested in seeing that later, we'd be more than too happy to show you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Sheriff Doug Engel to speak about the proposed levy.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Again, tonight, I'm here to answer your questions. Apparently, you've read the paper, the Crescent, the Hicksville Tribune, there's been issues about the 911 levy. Yes, we are putting on a levy in November. It is a renewal with an increase. Now, please understand that there is new money that will be attached to that, because over the past multiple years, our cost of doing business has increased, as all of you as councilpersons understand, that you look into this magical ball and you hope for the best, when we start projecting over the next five years, what we're going to end up with. You have to look at the insurance costs that are increasing at 10% to 15% a year. We must also look at employee costs, which are rising, along with the just general maintenance of equipment. Now, also with this renewal, or this levy, we are also looking at some projects in this. And part of the projects is changing our radio system. We've been working diligently for the last year and a half on our current radio system because it's faulty. We have areas of no coverage, we have areas of problems that we have with getting through to our base station. With what had occurred is federally, we had to go to what's called narrow banding, and when we went into, the FCC forced us into narrow banding, and when we did that, it reduced the amount of coverage we have in our bandwidth. By doing that, is when our difficulties began. So over the last year and a half, we've explored many options with not only law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS. So we've come up with a plan that we truly believe is going to be helpful to all aspects of first responders and public safety, and also very helpful to city councils, township trustees throughout the county. With this levy, it will allow us to purchase and go to the MARK system. Now, again, the MARK system is a 800 megahertz system. This MARK system will allow us to communicate throughout the entire county, we've tested this now for over a year. And we've done heat maps, you name it, we've done research on which is the best radio system. Some opponents to the MARK system is the fact that there is a service charge per radio, monthly, for every radio that's utilized in the county, or in the agency. And therefore, part of the 911 levy funds would assist us at paying that, so that no entity, okay, no entity, your council, your village, would not have to pay that service fee. Now, there's a lot of steps in this process, let me explain. The first step is obviously because we have changed our radio frequency, which our radio frequency currently is set by Canadian rules, because we're so close to Canada, they determine our FCC licensing. And after our third attempt to change our frequency to what we were told was a better band, we accomplished that, we changed that six months ago. We've had failures with our radio system. There's been times that our officers have been on the scene and have radioed for assistance to help the community personnel that's out there, that we couldn't get back into our base station. And we ended up having to call in by cellphone and try to communicate via cellphone. And all of you who have cellphones understand, there's still some areas in Defiance County that those don't work. The 800 megahertz will work, will work throughout the county. We've tested it in all locations that we could not get either cell coverage and/or radio coverage, and it does work. The question is, is some people will tell you that we should go to what's called the P25, which is an 800 megahertz system, but the system's owned by Lucas County and Toledo. So we've looked at that. In order for us to do that, it would force us to purchase and build two 800 megahertz towers in our county, at approximately $1 million per tower, before we buy a radio. So when we looked at that, granted, we wouldn't have the service fees, but the harsh reality of it is, is it's costing effective for our communities. So the 800 megahertz system, which is operated and owned by the Department of Public Safety in Ohio, has worked with us, and we have signed an agreement with them to put radios in every law enforcement officer's hand in this county. After multiple research on that, the 911 center will be paying for the radios, and also the service fee for every portable, for every law enforcement officer in this county. Okay? When I said we're taking this in steps, we're taking it in steps. The next thing that we need, and the next option that we have going, is for our fire agencies. They have the ability to file for a grant. This grant will allow them to receive approximately, well, $50,000 per fire agency in our county. With that money, they can purchase a certain amount of radios, portable radios, along with the essentials that come with it, the charging units and whatnot. They can also apply as part of the $50,000 for the service fees to be covered. If and when the levy passes, and again, these are all in stages, so the fire agencies would file this year for these grants. Now, if we go countywide, every fire agency within the county goes countywide, and they all file for this grant, we have, I would say, a 99% chance of receiving the grant for every fire agency. If they go as individuals, the state probably will not look at them, okay, which would change the whole gamut of the plan, so to speak. Now, you have to understand, if, when the levy passes, it doesn't start till 2020. So again, our current levy runs to the end of 2019. So this process would be a moving forward process, it's not going to happen overnight. I want to assure you of that. Okay? It is needed, because we need to support our citizens, we need to be out there for our citizens, and be able to respond to their needs. Some things to look at in the future, I know you're, Mary, you and I have spoken about your water tower coming down. The repeater system and the radio system, that's all yours, we own nothing of that. Okay? That's all Hicksville's. But with this MARK system, there's light at the end of the tunnel there, with this MARK system, okay, we are looking at not needing that tower. Okay? We can put repeaters and mobiles in essential vehicles. For your fire agency, it may mean two. For your fire agency, it may mean two, one in each one of your squads, and then your essential trucks that are going out to every fire that would take and alleviate that extra tower and the money possibly that you would need.
Is that at our cost to put those repeaters in the vehicle?
Well, again, I'm not going to say it's at your cost, okay? Because this is a process. We need to talk to you about when you're going to take that tower down because there's some other things that you have to understand. We will still be maintaining the VHF system because of the fact that our pagers for every firefighter is connected to the VHF system, okay? Our tornado and weather sirens are connected to that. Currently in Ohio, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, or Putnam County EMS and Fire through the Sheriff's Office is piloting a program of 800-megahertz paging system for all their firemen. It's working. There's two other cities that are testing that. They assure me that they are working on the tornado or weather sirens for us to be able to set those off with the 800-megahertz system also. Our plan as it sits today is that in the future, that we will encompass at the 911 center, all the service fees that are not paid for out of the Fire Marshal's Grant and law enforcement monies will come out of the 911 center. It's a way to do it across the board and save your general fund, the county commissioner's general fund, all the township trustees' general funds are where this money would come from. That is our goal, is to encompass it. And the harsh reality of it is, the more you have, the cheaper the rate, if you understand that, okay? Sometimes by us pooling sources together, it actually saves a bundle of money. So again, we have to do this in order to protect our citizens. There's nothing worse than an officer or firefighter to be at a scene and need something to help that citizen and not be able to communicate. And that's our goal. And again, we've tested this all over. The issue you have when we talk about repeaters, there's certain areas that inside buildings in Hicksville, there may be difficulty getting out. If we walk out of the building on the street, I guarantee you, you can talk, okay? So again, there's certain things that we are looking at and studying. I'm here to answer any of your questions that you...
Thank you for coming and explaining that to council and to everyone that's present and listening in TV land.
Okay. So, okay, there's a reason behind it, so please understand. The levy monies, the new, the .4 mill is because, and we could go into great detail, that's actually a cost savings to the citizens by doing the .4 additional because of some state legislation, but for another night.
Do any of you have questions for the sheriff?
I was wondering, sorry, go ahead. You have, the other agencies in the county, are they behind this? And have you, you know, working together and change? Change is hard for people over time.
As of a week ago...
As of a week ago, we made a purchase through state contracting with Motorola to purchase 100 radios for all law enforcement in Defiance County and as well as the 911 center. We're looking at probably a lead time of eight to 10 weeks, and law enforcement in Defiance County will be operating off the MARK system. Obviously, the process gets shorter if the fire departments who have access to grant monies, that law enforcement doesn't have apply for them. Like the sheriff said, that's $550,000 if all fire departments sign onto the grant that comes back to Defiance County from the state. It's earmarked every year. It's been earmarked for countless number of years. We could go into all that. I have my opinions on how they should go about doing that, but that's not my place. But then, like the sheriff said, our goal is to help you guys out. When we came to this plan, we didn't want to financially hurt any of our townships or our villages or our cities. So we came up with a plan, and with this levy money, if so passed by the voters, allows us to proceed with the plan. Again, I know there may have been some sticker shock initially. Some of the numbers that came back after our few first meetings, I can promise you those numbers came down drastically. We're not going to stop fighting to protect not only our responders, but we're going to protect our villages and our budgets. Trust me, we're working diligently with multiple vendors to break prices down. It's fun to mention other vendors in front of vendors, and then suddenly the price breaks and whatnot. So, for that being said, like I said, the sheriff said, it's all predicated on the 911 levy, number one. And number two, every entity in Defiance County coming together. I can tell you that as of today, there are three fire departments in Defiance County that regardless of the MARK levy or the MARK grant, will be going to the MARK system. And there are two volunteer fire departments that are going to do it based off poor radio coverage.
Knowing how costly radio equipment is, my question to the chief is, will $50,000 cover all your needs for getting all the equipment?
Chief, let me jump in. That's $50,000 the first year. You can then apply the second year. And again, so it could end up being $100,000. So I will assure you that our goal is to make certain that every fire agency, either through the grant or through the 911 center, has what they need, the basic minimum need.
What was your comment?
Okay?
Did you say something when I was asking the question?
How long are you going to work on, then you'll have both systems operating for a while, I would assume?
Correct.
We will not pull that VHF system down until your tornado sirens go off on MARK system. Can't do it. I won't take that chance. I won't run there this year.
Correct.
So until that happens, though, we are very fortunate that we are not the first county in Northwest Ohio that's going to be doing this. Fulton County currently talks about, across both channels at the same time. Until that tornado siren can be set off through MARK, we will not make the change.
Correct.
The paging, like the sheriff said, is being tested and worked on in Putnam County. It works, but it's still not setting tornado sirens off. Until that happens, we will not pull that on that system.
And I think you have to also understand that from a mutual aid system, especially for the fire service agencies, Paulding County entirely goes to it October 1st, law enforcement and firefighters throughout the county. Putnam County's already on it. Henry County is on it. The sheriff's office is. The fire agencies are talking, trying to go that way. Fulton County is on it. Williams County has always been on the 400-megahertz system, so we've never really been able to talk to them, period. So we don't want to be on that island that we can't communicate with our neighboring partners. So that's part of this whole thought process. So, okay? Any other questions? If anytime anybody has questions, please call us. You know, the rumor mill's going to fly. We're still, so you understand, we're still waiting on the numbers from the county auditor about per $100,000 home property, what the cost of this would be. A guesstimate, and I hate to use that word, guesstimate from her, was up to $12 a year with this increase. And that was a guesstimate without her doing any workup on it, so, okay? So again, if you have questions, please feel free to call the sheriff's office, talk to Matt or I on this. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the fact that Mitch's name, or Nick, I'm sorry, is on the agenda here was a mistake based on the paper that I gave Cheryl just to have to talk about the subject. Nick Slattery did call me about the machineroo. Aquifer had concerns that we're paying attention to what's going on in Northwest Ohio. Yes, Larry?
Did you want the papers?
Well, I don't know anything about a paper.
I came house to house Saturday.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I did, I did get that paper with a note scratched on the back.
Couldn't make it up, Tom, but you...
No, it was Sunday night, Sunday night. So anyway, there is some legislation proposed in the packet tonight, so I don't know if you're all reading about it in the newspaper, but there's concerns about a bunch of water out of our aquifer that we get our water out of pumped up into other communities in Northwest Ohio.
Cleveland wants it.
Yeah. Several communities want it, I think, but, so there's concerns about drawing water that we use. We're in the shallow part. We would be some of the first ones affected from conversations that I've had because we're on the edge of the aquifer. We're not in the deepest part. So anyway, that's, thank you. We'll talk about that later, I suppose, in the legislation. So then we'll go on to boards and commissions. Planning Commission met on July 26th. The minutes are in the packet. A lot split was approved at a physical address of 370 Chicago Avenue, it appears. And then we have the park board minutes, and I imagine you had a chance to read them before you came tonight. And then we will...
Val, what was it? It's here that you are having a lot of complaints on the restroom?
Compliments.
Oh. Oh. I didn't see that. Sorry.
A lot of compliments.
Sorry. Are you getting a lot of complaints? No complaints. Okay.
I think it looks good. I think the park looks good.
That was good. Val, I will call on you later during the department head reports, okay? Yep. Glad we got that screen. So then we will go on to the cemetery board. You have minutes in your packet, and on the back, I don't know if you noticed, but they have their financials on the back for the first half of the year, and I always find that very interesting. Would you like to comment about the cemetery board meeting, Sheila?
Um, we don't have any complaints either.
Compliments?
We haven't any of them either. Well, they really, they showed that by coming out and sponsoring a flag. We had 81 out of 100 sponsored, and we cleared $831.82 after all the bills were paid. And next year, all that will be 100% because there will be no billing.
And that was very impressive, seeing all the flags at the cemetery. I heard a lot of good comments on that, and I don't know if anybody stopped and read the tags at each flag about family members that were honored and stuff like that. It was very nice. So my thanks and compliments to whoever went to all that work to do that.
Zane Ziede. Zane, he does a lot out there that people, you know, but that's the way he wants it too. He likes it that way. And also, there is a compliment for Kenny and Ron, how great a job they do out here. And the next meeting is October 9th at 4:30 at the City Hall. If anybody has any problems, complaints.
Was that a compliment or a...
Thank you very much. Any other boards and commissions that aren't on our list here? All right. We'll go on to committee reports, starting with personnel, and I believe that comes back to Sheila again.
Yeah, to Sheila. Now, there was some complaints. The 23rd at 4, it was, we're here to talk about all the applications we had. We had five of them. They were six total, all good ones, but we decided to bring Kent back. We all voted yes. And we called him in. He was here, and he talked about what he would like to do, and he would like to move Mike Bailey up a little bit and kind of assist him, which if he would have listened to me in the very beginning of this, we wouldn't have went through all this time and money because I, we offered to do that for you. Anyways, we're recommending Kent back. The bottom line. And then the next, you want to go again? We had another one on the 27th. We were asked, we were discussed about having Julie and Cheryl and Kent all train someone within a year before they decide to retire again, so we know we have that covered. And...
The only one I was going to point out on that, I don't remember not, I don't remember Ron not being in favor.
Of what? Of Mike?
Moving Mike up. I thought Eric and Ron were in favor.
I was.
Eric was. Yeah.
Well, this is...
At that time, when we, before we started the meeting, I was...
No.
Before you started.
That's why we called the meeting.
Well, I would recommend...
Before you were called down.
That's fine. Nah, whatever.
I would recommend that we hire Kent Miller in the administrator's position, and if there are particulars that need noted in the minutes, I guess somebody needs to say what exactly they are.
We have to do it ordinance anyway.
Okay.
To address the pay.
Okay, all right.
They're currently scheduled to pay this. Then we'll just make it retroactive.
All right.
I have a question for Kent since he's up for that position. Being gone for a while and then coming back, did you see anything you would change? You know, your administrator, what, 15, 16 years prior?
17 years.
17.
I'd kind of like to have Mike start doing a lot more than what I've been doing. Yeah, there's things I've learned I'm going to try to do different.
You're going to delegate a little bit more, maybe not be so stressed.
Well, then we came back on August 1st and had another meeting. It's in their packet. And that was my main concern is Mike understood, and mainly that I understood his position because I was thinking it was a whole different ballgame than what I thought. But Mike will be assisting Kent and assisting the departments, you know, get a CDL. And he'll be moved up to labor two, what, Kent?
Well, no, that part's all right. I was just going to let full council know too, that by doing this, you're going to end up saving money because I'm going to be able to...
Yeah.
Since we lost one employee in the street department, I'm not filling that spot. I'm filling it with Mike. So by the time, even though he's getting a raise and everybody's going to think, oh, it's costing money, in the long run, and this was just a rough figuring the other day when I was just looking at budget stuff, it's going to shave about $12,000 or $15,000 off one or the two budgets. So I'm not adding, I'm not adding a body or gaining any, I'm gaining a body, so to speak, but it's not adding any money to anybody's budget.
What's the percent that he'll be the bill inspector and then 50/50, would you say?
He said he puts about four hours in zoning now.
You see how things go? I've given him a lot of stuff just this week to carry on.
I think we need to back Kent's wishes.
And it fills a street department spot when he's needed there too, so...
So I'll go on the mayor's recommendation to hire Kent as administrator and move Mike Bailey up full-time.
That was after six months probation.
Yeah, he'd be on probation there. I should be back on probation.
I know, I thought about that, but...
Including my wife's probation.
They're more than welcome to come if they want to be here.
Well, I still got one hurdle there.
We need a job description for Mike.
He's got to be a Class II laborer.
We need a job description for his...
Is there already a Class II laborer?
Yeah, he'd just be the laborer. Although he'll still do zoning. I'm not creating a new position where you got to change the ordinance. He's going to be a Class II laborer, but he's going to still do zoning, help me and be street department.
So you want a six-month probation?
Yeah, he should be.
That doesn't work for me because the two doesn't do any zoning.
No, but I could have any employee be a zoning inspector.
But then you got a different pay grade.
Yeah, that's where he's going to a Class II for everything that he can do.
Then that would be a different job description.
Yes. Sorry.
Okay, how about I...
Just have to include the zoning description in with the Class II labor description.
Then you're creating a whole new line.
Exactly.
What if I just take over zoning and delegate it to whoever I want?
It would be easier just to write a job description. It'll take you half an hour.
You're stressing him out, aren't you?
Welcome.
I need it. Sorry.
Okay, I will come up with...
Thank you.
Welcome back, Kent.
Is it class-two? Just add the zoning.
Can you just bring his nameplate back?
Name or second name?
I don't know if we can even vote on it since we don't have a job description established, and so...
We can bring it next time.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll bring it.
But he could do the job now.
Can you vote on Kent?
No.
Yeah, wait till...
Why? Why can't you vote on Kent? Because we need to bring in ordinance because he's got a different pay scale. Not Kent? Yes, he does. He's taking a drop in pay.
Well, see, and that's where I told the committee I was okay with just being paid what the other guy was, and if you want to change it first of the year, I'm okay with that.
We can do it all at the next meeting, retroactive to August 1st, correct?
I want to do it.
Okay.
I thought it was in here, back to the same date, in the minutes.
Well, I know, but...
It is, but it's not in the ordinance.
Whatever it takes to get him back.
Okay, anything else for Personnel Committee?
I have a...
It's changing my mind.
No?
But no, I want to thank Personnel Committee for looking at all that.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you, everyone that applied and showed interest, Jess.
Yeah.
I have a first and a second for Kent. We're not voting.
Well, Troy said we needed to pass a pay legislation first.
Okay.
So...
It's gone.
Okay.
Withdraw my nomination.
And this is only, this is more or less for Cheryl, too. What's my status in the meantime? I saw that part-time for what you're paying me, which is more than what I was going to be making salary.
I was going to say, you're better off, so...
You'd be saving money, because I was going to suggest retroing it back to August 1st. That's the starting period.
We can do that.
Save you guys money.
So we can do that?
But...
It'll be fine.
Well, no, in the meantime, you got to pay me.
I don't think anybody would know.
So, no, just so Cheryl and I know what, if I'm still that part-time until then, I'll try to make sure I don't get overtime. There again, I'm fine waiting till the next meeting, but...
The pay period starts on August 1st, so you'll be fine.
No, we're going to get paid August 17th.
The meeting is on the 16th?
On the 20th.
Oh, no, it's on the 20th.
So I'm still got...
I can work it out. It'll be okay.
Okay, I'll just give you my time card. It'll be whatever it is. I've never paid attention to that, anyway. I guess I don't want to goof you up.
You won't.
So Mike is not full-time until then, right?
Nope, I'll get something written up.
Mike uses, Mike works as many hours as he needs to to get his job done, right? So, I mean, is he nearly full-time already?
Well, close to it some weeks.
Okay.
So, no, that's fine. I'll just keep having him do stuff unofficially, so...
Any other things for Personnel?
You can have a special meeting.
No.
Have four of them. Yeah, I mean, if someone feels like we need to have a special meeting for it, just let me know, and we'll get it taken care of.
No, I will come up with something. For me personally, no, you don't have to have no special meeting. I'll just keep using Mike the way it is and...
Okay. So if nothing else for Personnel, we'll go on to Water and Sewer Meeting, July 30th.
Yep, we had a pretty informative Water and Sewer Meeting, July 30th. The Underground Utilities Bill that we had received, we're still wanting to fight that as a committee and we should Personnel, Troy was working back and forth a little bit.
I thought everybody got that answer that I got from, I'm going to forget his name, Underground Utilities. It wasn't from Mike, it was from...
Mr. Boers.
Yeah.
Mr. Boers, about where I asked him those five or six questions about why there wasn't a change order, why they didn't stop the job in the middle, and quite frankly, his answer was a bunch of nonsense. He's basically blamed the engineer, saying they should have got a change order. That's not how it works. Contractor gets the change, requests the engineer to request a change order, and then it's addressed, so... But we've not readdressed that back to them.
We have not.
I did speak to somebody from RCAP today in regards to that situation, and they said due to the fact that it wasn't part of the change order during the job, that they would not encourage us to pay the bill. It shouldn't have been addressed then. There was a job that had any additional work was to be done, so as we stand right now, we're not for paying.
I don't know if you want to talk about an executive session, but a couple of things I brought up as far as my criticism, what he was telling people that's going to change.
Yeah, we should, if we're going to talk about that, we're stuck by...
Standings, they have, might want to have a shorter one.
And then we got a couple of meetings with RCAP coming up, and Bogomir's got, working off the three options for the Chicago Avenue project. Anybody else had any questions concerning Water and Sewer? So we've got a meeting set with Andy Goll, with OB EPA.
Who is going to get back with?
I can, if you want, about... After we talk tonight, then we can go tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Just so it's not dropped.
Right.
Any other thing for Water and Sewer? Does anyone have any questions? All righty. Are there any other council committee reports? Anything that the committee...
No reports, just police fire EMS, trying to get a date and time set up for a meeting for the three of us to coincide with a time for working second shift hours and one being gone, and so trying to get something recorded here soon.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Administrator's report?
Temporary administrator. No, just a couple of things. Anyway, we had a meeting last week with the RCAP gentleman that's going to be in charge of the GIS program. So today, Troy and Austin spent all day out spray painting. And on the USA Blue Book, there's a bill for six-hundred-and-some dollars. That's just going to be the tip of the iceberg for paint. We're going to have town painted blue and green, and that's going to be very time-consuming. So we're going to be kind of stretched on people, but we've started that because I think they wanted to have that done by, what, October or something? I lost track of that. So anyhow, I'll get ready to spend some money. Although, I will add Sherwood phones costing us money, too. We're getting locates...
Hey, that's good.
Right and left, but anyhow. So if people see all this paint going around, don't go out and scrub it off or whatever. I guess the rest of this, wait for executive session, I guess. The only thing, I'll be out of town on the 16th and 17th. If anybody wants to make a note of that, both on, both, two different trips, both on village business.
Thank you, Kent.
Leave that table tonight. I think what we're going to do is, as long as he's selling them at value at auction, we can pass just a general ordinance that authorizes him to sell things at auction from time to time. We probably should do that on a yearly basis, anyway, so we can go ahead and do it. And then as he sees fit, at the appropriate times, can sell it. So that one, unless somebody wants to bring it back for some reason, will just remain tabled. And then the first thing, these are all first readings. According to Cheryl, no emergency. So Resolution 2018-14, first reading by caption only, a resolution to assess streetlight millage. Resolution 2018-15...
I got a question on that last one. Is that the same millage, up-down, streetlights? Same? Okay, thanks.
You know, Cheryl, that, that can change based on if we need it or not, you know? Okay.
Resolution 2018-15, first reading by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax duplicates of the properties described in Exhibit A, which for now, we're on the back, and that's subject to change between now and when we ultimately pass it. That has to be done before a certain time of the year so that it can get included on the tax duplicates. Resolution 2018-16, first reading by caption only, a resolution of Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent cost of Weeden grass mowing on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A. Again, another list that may be updated. Resolution 2018-17, a resolution entered into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2019. Again, another thing that we got to pass, just so we can get our reimbursement from the state for the expense of providing counsel to indigent defendants. And then Resolution 2018-18, first reading by caption only, resolution recognizing and promoting the importance of the groundwater aquifer in opposition to drilling for or private distribution of the groundwater from the Mcandoa Glacial Aquifer to locations outside of the designated aquifer. This is what Diane was making up as a resolution.
Is that being emergency or no?
Thank you, Troy. Do you have anything else to add? That's another on the agenda. Does anyone have any questions for Troy? All righty, thank you. We will go on to the department head reports. May we have our police chief stick me, please?
Good evening. Passed around the report to everybody. You probably haven't had a chance for a little bit of it. Our numbers, I will tell you, are down just a little bit as far as the quantity goes for traffic citations and activity like that, but our calls for service were up a great deal this month, so we didn't have time to be out doing that kind of stuff. We were busy doing other things. Does anybody have any questions about it? I have something that I wasn't really planning on bringing up for council tonight, but since we're not having the police fire EMS meeting for whenever...
Right now, we're looking for, at August 20th, the earliest all three of us are available.
Okay. The mayor and I discussed before, some time ago, about me being able to be gone to take classes, being gone for two weeks at a time if necessary to take a class. I have one that was scheduled to be coming up real soon, and if I'm not going to be able to discuss it before the committee, I need to, I guess, discuss it before you guys. I have a class coming up that's a two-weeks class, and I guess I need permission to take it. Is that what we want?
What's a class, and where's it at?
This class is in London. It's a traffic crash investigators class. It's paid for by a grant for the cost of the class itself. Since it's in London, the room and board is fifteen dollars a day.
You might want to say Ohio.
So it'd be seventy-five. Okay, London, Ohio.
It's fifteen pounds heavy.
Yes. Yeah.
You know how that goes.
I don't think the exchange rate's very good either, right now, so we wouldn't be... But anyway, but it's a, it's a two-weeks class. It's in London, Ohio. It's a prerequisite for other courses I'd like to plan on taking as well.
And he did bring that up to me, and I did have concerns about him being gone for another couple of weeks this year because of having new officers and them needing trained and every, you know, that sort of thing. The State Highway did crash investigations for us in the past, correct?
No, we do our own crash investigations. I don't know what exactly you're referring to, but...
Yeah, I thought you brought the one up to me that was a fatality when you were selling the training.
If there's a fatality, they would assist, they would assist us with things, yes.
All right. So that is, I asked him to bring it up to the committee, and I would agree, since you're not meeting it in a timely manner, he doesn't have any...
Yeah, I wasn't trying to spring it on you suddenly. This was not my plan, but...
Right. So I guess what you need to do or make a motion, if one of you wants to...
Is this like level one? I mean, or is it...
This is level two. I had level one. I had level one. I need to take level two. It goes in stages. You do level one, level two, level three, and then there's the reconstruction as classes. You have to take them in order. They're only offered so many times a year. This is the time I can take it this year. If I don't take it now, I'll have to wait until sometime after the first next year, which I don't know. They don't have their class dates posted yet.
What a question. With any type of officer, you have to have continuing education, like any field like that?
Sure. It's not required by the state this year because they don't have the funds to reimburse us for, but most years, if they're going to require it by the state, if the state's going to require continuing professional education for the patrolman, then they have to be able to reimburse us a certain amount for that. They're not able to reimburse us this year, so there's none required this year. Last year, they were twenty hours. Their goal is to increase it to up to like forty hours a year.
So that's for every officer?
Every officer would have to have it, yes. With, and something else I explained before, too, is I'm trying to get some more classes in this year because we do have so many new guys that I've told them, as part of the way to try and keep them here and get them invested in this community, is to tell them, pick an area that you'd be interested in, and it's going to benefit our department, and we'll try to get you to class. Because I've got a bunch of new guys, there's going to be a bunch of people wanting to go to classes like I told them they'd be able to next year. I'd like to get as many of these things out of the way as I can now so that next year, we'll be free to have them be able to go to their classes.
How many, how much do you offer each officer, new officer? Two weeks, four weeks?
It depends. It's not a time. It's not like that, really, because some classes that you go to would be like a one-day class or a two-day class, maybe a two-weeks class. It all depends on the class that they're going in, what area they're trying to go in, and what days the classes are available. Classes fill up quickly sometimes. Depends on the subject.
Most of the classes, I mean, were all... All different fees, or, I mean, cost of...
Yeah, it goes, this one, this particular one I'm interested in is not costing us only the room and board and trip charge because it's paid for by a grant by NHTSA, National Highway Traffic Administration. We have, for example, Officer Franz is going to go to a field sobriety testing instructor's class. That's also paid for by NHTSA. So that's only going to cost us the cost of him staying down in London again for that Ohio. But, and that's what we try to do, is we try to get our people to get into classes that are going to benefit them as well as the Village of Hicksville. And if we can do it in London, it's cheaper because of the fifteen dollars a day to pay for meals and a place to stay. When we can't get that, we end up having to send them someplace else, and either costs us the backing cost driving several days, or it costs us a lot of money to stay in a hotel and pay for meals. So we try to avoid that.
If anybody's interested, the chief has given me information on all the training that everybody attended last year and what he was hoping for training this year, and it's on my desk, so anybody can come and look at it and if you want to see what they've been, what they did last year. And a little training's been done this year so far, so... Anyway...
I think you mentioned some concerns about me being like out of town during that time. And also, like, just during this meeting, I was texting back and forth with one of my officers. There was a tree down, and he's one of the new guys. I wanted to make sure he was doing things right. So I'm always in touch with everybody. Occasionally, there's a mess up with the email because the last time was a class, but that was a technical problem that I think has been resolved, and we won't make that mistake again. But generally speaking, like, the last training I was at, it was after midnight when I received a phone call. I called him right back. I took calls during the class. I'm always in touch with the guys. I think you can ask them that, and they'll back me up on that.
So if someone just wants to make a motion, you know, one way or the other, whatever, so he knows whether he's going or not, that would be great.
I'll second Laurie's motion.
That he goes.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Marth.
Yes.
Thank you very much. You guys have any questions?
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
I should have too.
Kramer?
He wouldn't have got to go.
I'd like to thank Illendale Farm for generous donation of the fire department. They donated a couple, two thousand dollars to us. We're not sure what we're getting yet, but...
Did you give it to Cheryl?
Gave it to Cheryl.
Burn them all in your pocket, yeah.
No, we tried to be pretty frugal. There's a few things have been won for quite a few years that we just haven't done anything with.
That was nice of them.
Yep. And the only thing, other thing I have is the breakfast and 5K run October 6th in conjunction with Hop-Toberfest. Breakfast starts at seven.
I was just trying to think of the proper name. Hop-Stuff.
October.
Oh, Hop-Tober?
October.
All righty.
And I'd like to thank Parker Hannafin. They gave us a tripod for confined space rescue, so we're going to have to get a class together on that.
All right.
Get training.
What kind of training has your department been doing lately?
Well, we had some water rescue training. There's a lot of swimming and diving was done then.
Oh, did you?
Oh, that's too bad.
That was our training this month.
Was the training at the park also for the fire department and EMS, or was that, you know, the helmet removal training?
Oh, helmet removal, yeah, that was on the EMS side.
Oh, just EMS? Okay.
Well, fire was there, too.
All right. I thought that was interesting.
Has your runs increased your last...
Has your runs increased here last, this year at all?
Not really, I haven't really looked at the numbers close, but.
I just hear a lot of sirens sometimes.
Oh, I know.
A lot of it's EMS, they're up.
EMS and fire, yeah, police. Thank you for all you do.
We've had a couple mutual aid calls that we want on.
Any questions for fire chief?
I'd like to have executive session afterward.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we will go on to the EMS chief.
Last month we had 45 runs, that brings our total up to 287 runs. Just for your information, last year we had a grand total of 354. So we are way ahead of last year and like Scott alluded to, we have been and have done some mutual aid calls here lately and that seems to be working out well because we get along with other department pretty well and we've been working very well with them, so. Just also say thank you to Sheila, Sheila came to the station last week and.
How was her response time?
Actually she, actually she came and she sat with us for about five hours. Sat with us for about five hours. We went to the helmet rescue or helmet removal training down at the hospital, showed her the billing system, showed her the reporting system, did a squad check with her and because she made the comment, well, put me to work and, or what would you do even if I wasn't here? So I hope it was a, it was time well spent and.
It was interesting.
And, yeah, and I encourage each and every one of you, if you don't know what we do, come over, come over because I guarantee that you don't know what we do. Sheila, Sheila was kind enough and thank you for supper that night too.
Oh.
That was really nice, so. But other than that, we'll probably break 300 by the end of this month, we'll probably break 310 by the end of this month and probably we will break 400, I'm guessing, right around the end of September. So we may, we may even eclipse 500 runs this year, so. And with six people, that gets to be, that's a lot. One of our, one of our EMTs ran 254 hours in a two week pay period and I honestly think that's way too much. So we will continue to work diligently on getting people to sign up and we're diligently towards getting some more EMTs, so that way everybody knows that when they call 911, they have a proper response, so.
I liked that the payroll and the time cards just today from last week and I really appreciate the time that those volunteers are spending on call and also you full-time people that are picking up the slack too on call and the drivers of course in the fire department that takes all of you to, to keep the squad going and.
It does, it really does and it's not only, it's not only the fire and EMS, but it's you guys as well. It really is you guys because you guys have the ultimate, you know, decision of our response times and, you know, by us being there, so that, that's something that you guys.
How's your classes going?
We, I gave Cheryl the bill for the next class. I thought I was going to have to do CPR on her. She's, we haven't talked at length yet about where we're going to pull the money, but that is coming, so.
Sweet. Any other questions? Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, we're on the fiscal officers report. Wait a minute, sorry Val, park director.
I'd just like to thank the vacation department for the donation of three dog patients center that we installed at the park.
They're up?
Yep.
Alright, great.
And the pool will be closing August 17th.
August 17th, the pool's closing.
Having a lot of active, a lot of participants in the pool this year, being so hot and humid. That's good, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing.
That's okay.
This is, and the reason I mentioned it now is because of the park. The new parking lot at the park looks beautiful and everything and we'd like to keep it that way. I'd like you guys to consider maybe putting up some sort of a barrier like they have at drive-throughs to eliminate trucks pulling in there. We had one truck that went ahead and pulled around and there didn't damage the parking lot, did hit both of the gates, but then a couple of days later, another truck stopped before it tried to go under the underpass or the viaduct and it was backing up even though we had told the driver, do not go into that parking lot. Like three times we told him that and I look up in my rearview mirror and what's he doing? Backing into the parking lot. So I'm afraid from what I understand from Kent, that's not a heavy duty enough asphalt surface to be able to have trucks going into that all the time. I hate to see it get messed up. I'd like you guys to consider doing something to protect that parking lot, whatever you would do is obviously up to you guys, but that's just my suggestion.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
That's the next one I do.
That'd be terrible to have that all gouged up. Well, Val, things look good at the park. Val's going to make a call to try to get a pickleball clinic set up at the park and the Eagles Auxiliary donated some money, so I bought pickleball rackets and pickleballs for that clinic, so we're just going to wait for all the fun to begin.
I have to make sure I got the right phone number because he has not answered any of my calls.
Okay, well, he was on vacation when I first called him and he called me back and left a message, so I know, unless I wrote the number down for you wrong.
I'll double check tomorrow.
Alright, and I have his number on my desk. Thank you everyone. Thank you Eric for keeping me on task there. So now we'll go to the fiscal officers report.
I have the statement of cash and it has month to date, year to date through the end of July and all the other July reports. Income tax is, barrel hanging in there for the year, 9%. You have the utility collections, mayor's court collections, the franchise fees and a letter for media com to go with it with the rate hike on every package. And that's all I have.
Had you got my email from last week about that one fund?
Asking what?
About what?
About the refuse fund.
Guess we probably better put it.
Has it gone down that much? Am I reading it right? You might want to take a look at your refuse fund. You're starting Val, I'm concerned right now. It's going to be budget time pretty soon and I'm already scratching my head, I'm going to find some money for some various operating expenses.
The only good thing about that is on the encumbered, outstanding encumbrance, the Whirler bill I encumbered as much as I could estimating how much we're going to use for us for the year to pay their bills.
Kind of gone downhill fast.
Has anybody, have you checked to see what the difference is between what we're collecting and what Whirler's billing us?
Well.
I did a couple months ago.
Yeah, you can look on the report right here for July anyway.
We're only keeping 69 cents of everybody's bill, the other 13, 31 is going to treat the Whirlers. I don't want to say I told you, but I kind of pointed this out a year ago.
Even if we lowered it once, the refuse. Yeah, it was reasonable. How's you going to cover it?
In July we collected 18,000 and we spent 16,000 rounding.
I'm just saying.
So what comes out of that?
What comes out of that?
Not just the garbage, but the mosquito.
We still run the recycle lot and some other expenses that the street department cannot pick up and I spilled all this out to finance many last.
Yeah, you did.
You did, but we had such a nice cushion in the, in the refuse fund that we.
We've got four more months, we can change it.
Well, yeah, we had a nice cushion, but look where you're going. I'm just saying, you watching that?
Cheryl, could we get a month by month comparison?
In and out.
Exactly since Whirler started and.
Sure.
Because if there was a $2,000 credit in revenue last month, then I guess, or a $2,000 difference between what we collected and Whirler billed us, we shouldn't be going in the hole that bad. Okay, we'll check on that.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I've got a lot of other expenses coming out of there or had them in the budget because I had to watch what street was doing because it's limited.
Yeah.
You're robbing one to pay the other and I think you're.
Kind of budget time will adjust it, right?
Yeah, they hate to see you read the reads. I mean, that seems like kind of an easier reaction, but, but yeah, you're going to have to figure something out.
Alrighty.
Budget time's only two months away.
Jeff Rumpel?
Nothing.
Superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant, do you have anything to report tonight?
Nope.
Alright. Okay. Well, I'll go on to the mayor's report then. You have in your packet an invitation to the Hicksville Chamber back to school breakfast form and usually the way we do this is if you are interested in going to that, let Cheryl Smith know and she will take care of those reservations for us.
I'll work to be there.
And then the nuisance board had a meeting today. I just want to run this past you because we have had a couple of meetings with Crook Miller about getting the little block building removed at the corner of Oak Street, which a lot of people call Hicks and Handle Lane and also getting rid of all the dirt piles that are by the railroad tracks, by offays and, and by that little brick building. So this was our second meeting with Crook Miller today and we have been working with them on timeframes of when they can get this work done and they have a quote to get the piles of dirt hauled away, but could not work that amount of money into their finances for this year or they wanted like a year, year and a half to get it done or whatever. So I would like to see it done sooner than that, so I proposed that and they, they would use their person using the loader and then we would hire or they would hire the dump truck company to have the dump trucks there to load and they had a site to get rid of the dirt and debris and, and they had no clue, the guy that was here today had no clue that there had been, their employees had allowed cement and rebar and everything to be dumped in there also with dirt and bark. So what I proposed to them, and I don't think there is any problem with this Troy, but you can tell me if there is, that the village clean that up and assess it to their property taxes. And what this will do then is, you know, we could get it all cleaned up this fall and then it wouldn't be assessed to their taxes until September of next year because that's the way the auditors do it. So in the meantime, they could make a payment during 2019 and then it would be definitely paid in full, due in full with their property taxes in 2020.
Two questions, one is you'd have to make sure you follow whatever the notice provisions and whatnot in order to do it, even if they're in agreement to do it. You have to do all that before you can legally assess it. And the other, I guess, issue in my mind is the precedent that you're setting by doing it and every time we got somebody that needs to, whether it's private or commercial, they need to clean something up, they say, oh, well, the village's got a bunch of money, you guys just clean it up and assess me for it and whether we want to get in the business of doing that. I mean, because you know it's coming, anytime you let somebody do it.
Good point.
You're going to have five more people that are, you know, hey, I'm a good corporate citizen, you guys just do it and I'll pay it out over the next three years, but you come up with the money now.
Then what happened if they sold the business, same between them?
Well.
Property or whatever.
Assess to the taxes.
Right.
Get it going with it and it would get taken care of then, but. Did they give you a price?
Yeah. $10,000 for.
$10,000?
Like 180 loads of feldre between all the piles and it's a local trucker, local hauler. They would, as I said, use their operator to fill the trucks, but you know, I think if it's not something that you're interested in doing, then, you know, they want a year, year and a half to clean it up, so, I mean, you know, and.
Can we force them?
Well, that's your option is because you're forcing, the only theory you have to force them is that we'll cause it to be done and we'll assess it to your taxes. The solution to that is it may not cost us $10,000 to, it may cost us, I realize they already have a plan, but that's always the downside to having the village do it and assess it is they might be able to get it done for 10 grand and we might only be able to get it done for 15. Especially since depending on their project might not apply to, but other projects might be large enough, got to be bid out or something like that, then all of a sudden you're dealing it's going to cost us a lot more to do some work than it would cost people to privately do it.
I mean, that, that dirt pile's been there a long time, all those dirt piles have been there for years and years and years. What stops them from removing them and then start piling it up again, because I think that's part of their process is.
Well, I discussed that with them and they have a contract with a company that hauls away their bark and stuff and they are also contracted to haul away the dirt with the bark, but it was never, it sounds like it's a fairly new agreement and so far they haven't had to haul anything away because they're just putting it on their dirt piles. And so that was their answer to my question is we have that handled because we have a company that's supposed to be taking it away.
But they're not.
Yeah, because they can pile it up. So anyway, would you like me to turn this, this was the nuisance board, so, but would you like me to turn it over to one of the committees of council so that you guys can, I mean, maybe you just want to let it sit there a year and a half, oh, maybe you want to force them to do it. They said it was a hardship to pay the $10,000 this year, I mean, to get it cleaned up, so.
Hard to believe, something like that, $10,000.
I mean, I don't think, I don't know if Crook Miller is struggling or not, but, I mean.
Been there a long time. I appreciate the fact that they're, kind of take a look at it to remove it, I mean, to get them to maybe slowly get it taken care of and caught up and then removed on a timely manner, you know, even if it takes, I don't know, force them I guess, or.
They have a contract with the company that's supposed to be doing it, I mean, they should reach out to them and kind of push the issue.
Well, they will be, I mean, I mean, that's not their intention to not use them, but they're not going to clean up the current piles they have.
I'd rather we do not get involved, but push them to get it done. If it takes a year, I guess what's another year? I hate to get involved, hauling it off, but I appreciate you reaching out to them.
Well, I'd like to see it cleaned up. I think it looks terrible down there, all the deer traffic is sent that way and I just think it looks terrible for our community, but if it doesn't bother anybody else and we don't have any solution to it, then, you know, and, I mean, I guess you have a, if you want to cause them a hardship and give them a deadline to get it done shortly, we can do that too. I mean, they say it's a hardship. hardship. I know their finances.
Yeah, I don't know their end of it, so.
Okay, well, I will tell them that we're not interested in.
That's why everybody else.
Putting that off or out there to them.
I don't want to get in that business.
No, no way.
Okay. I'll call them tomorrow and tell them that that's not an option. The other thing is I am planning a World War I centennial commemoration weekend. Saturday, November 10th, there's going to be World War I memorabilia displayed at Johnson Memorial Hospital, or Johnson Memorial Library. And anybody that would like to, that, anybody that has World War I memorabilia that would like to display it, we're going to try to find room for all that. But we do have one specific gentleman that's bringing his collection there for review. I would like to get a video of that I, that I've seen regarding the specific 47 days of the Battle of Musargan because that is more of my interest in focusing on the end of the war and the Battle of Musargan, since we have a street named the Musargan. And so that's why I particularly started working on that. And then Sunday, November 11th, at 1 o'clock, I have a speaker, Mitchell Yocelyn, is a military historian and archivist. He's written four books and numerous articles for well-known publications. He is considered one of the foremost authorities on the topic of World War I. He works as an investigative archivist at the National Archives and Records Commission, Records Administration. And he is going to come and speak from Maryland specifically on Musargan. So, and I think Kent, Kent has done a lot of research to help me find people who were listed as residents of the Village of Hicksville. Sometimes it's a little sketchy as to whether they were actual Hicksville residents or not, because their families might have actually moved, lived someplace else while they were there, but they were from Hicksville. Kent could explain all that better to you. But what I'm, what I would like to do is invite family members to this event, ancestors of the World War I Hicksville residents to this event and recognize them and their families. And so anyway, I'd like you to save the dates of November 10th and 11th to help us celebrate this. And the Veterans Committee has done some work and it's getting another granite slab for our veterans park. And Kent and I are trying to get some, seeing if we can actually get some new information on the rock at Musargan because we've been told that there's some misinformation on it and we think it should be corrected before we have people coming all over the place to recognize Musargan and Hicksville and our information's not correct. So we'll work on that. So anyway, does anyone else have anything that to bring up to council tonight? We've been asked to go into executive session. I believe that would be for personnel.
Could you also just add a little, if you want to call it personnel, call it administration. That'll cover it.
Would anybody care about that? Come on.
I could make a recommendation to go into executive session for personnel and what? Administration.
Action taken afterward?
Who knows?
I think.
We don't know, Peter. So.
I think on mine, you'll need to possibly.
Okay.
The other, I'm not sure.
You could.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Bridgewater?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.